I call the meeting to order. Do you would all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Red leagance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of agenda for our regular meeting. Under the provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by rule call vote an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, July 17th, 2017, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Eber.
Aye.
Mr. Ponder.
Aye.
Secretary votes aye. Dr. Gray.
Aye.
Mr. Scholz.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Hampton will come forward regarding a proclamation from the City of Ferguson.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Mayor James Knowles, on behalf of the City of Ferguson, has issued an official proclamation declaring July 16th, 2017, "We love the Ferguson-Florissant School District Day." This past Sunday, on July 16th, the district hosted an event at McClure High School where 1,000 district students received shoes from Samaritan's Feet, an organization that has provided over 6 million pairs of shoes to children in 88 countries. In addition, the Molina Foundation provided books to students, and Carolina Crown Drum and Bugle Corps served our students with a performance. Also participating in the event in a variety of ways were Walmart, First Bank, and various faith, business, and government leaders, and I have the proclamation that the City of Ferguson issued, and I'll hand that off to you. Thank you very much.
So that was just for board information. This portion of the meeting is allocated to show a short video from the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of interest to board members and the community. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of July. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the development of Missouri's state plan required under the federal government's Every Student Succeeds Act. The plan will provide the framework by which programs associated with ESSA are administered. Those programs provide assistance to rural and low-income students, along with services to students who are migrants, at-risk, homeless, and English learners. Commissioner of Education, Dr. Margie Van Deven, told an audience at MSBA's recent Leadership Summit, "While the state's ESSA plan is important, the Missouri School Improvement Plan will remain the driving force for school accountability in our state."
So, in Missouri, we have selected the Missouri School Improvement Program as our driver, as our driving force on accountability. ESSA aligns to that and will feed into that program. So we will be seeing some shifts, but primarily, I would pay attention to MSIP-6 and what's happening there. ESSA, we will still use as a big driver in identifying our schools and Title I, who are most in need of direct services and supports that can be provided, so we will still be required to identify our lowest-performing schools, and then we'll be able to support them accordingly, and that's based upon your math and English language arts scores and your attendance or graduation rates, so pay attention to that.
Van Deven participated in a panel discussion at the Leadership Summit with State Board of Education Vice President Vic Lenz and MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randle. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will submit the state plan to the U.S. Department of Education in September. Meanwhile, work groups have been meeting to develop the standards to be included in the sixth version of the Missouri School Improvement Program. During that panel discussion, MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randle told the audience not to fall into the trap of criticizing private schools and homeschoolers when opposing vouchers. She says the real issue with vouchers is accountability.
The argument is about, do we need a healthy, robust public education system to meet the needs of children? We shouldn't be in a debate on whether or not parents want to opt their children into private school. Our parents want to opt their children into homeschooling. What we ought to be about is making sure that the public education system is robust, that it is, when we're spending public taxpayer dollars, that there's accountability, and both for the children, ultimately for the children, and certainly for how the tax dollars are spent. Now, if other institutions want to access that, they ought to play by the same rules, but this is not us versus them.
Randle says she expects voucher proposals such as education savings accounts to be discussed again during next year's legislative session. Meanwhile, the U.S. Supreme Court has issued a ruling in a case involving Trinity Lutheran Church in Columbia that was watched closely by MSBA and other public education groups. The court ruled the church is eligible to receive a state grant to resurface its playground. However, the ruling was quite narrow and did not address the issue of whether or not private schools could receive public money under the Missouri Constitution. The new president of the Missouri School Boards Association is Jan Mies of the Columbia Board of Education. She assumed the role of president at the end of the Leadership Summit after serving as president-elect this past year. During her remarks, she said challenging issues facing the public schools of Missouri are not going away.
Our voice has to continue to be strong and proactive, never giving up on our efforts to promote the power and potential of public education.
State officers elected at the June Delegate Assembly included President-elect Mike Pratt of the Gaskinade County R1 Board of Education and Vice President Rhonda Gilstrap of the Blue Springs Board of Education. MSBA presented individual board members with awards for achieving various certification levels during the Leadership Summit. Sixteen school boards were recognized as outstanding boards of education for 2017, and 24 school boards achieved MSBA's Governance Team Award. One of the keynote speakers at the Leadership Summit was the current president of the National School Boards Association, Kevin Seack, a school board member from New Jersey. Seack reminded board members, "Students entering kindergarten this year will be high school graduates in the year 2030." He said school boards need to think about the kind of leadership necessary to ensure the graduates of 2030 will be prepared for their future. He also stressed the importance of providing educational options within the public school system.
And what is the strategic asset that stands behind public schools? What makes them great? We serve all. So how do you take a model that's designed to serve all and lift a nation and secure its national security and translate that to a model that not only serves all, but also meets the demands of what individual parents want for their children?
MSBA delegates had the opportunity to discuss a draft of the association's advocacy positions document during the Delegate Assembly held at the Leadership Summit. During the past few months, the MSBA Advocacy Committee and Executive Committee have been working to combine the association's legislative resolutions, platform statements, and the Missouri Public Education Vision Project document into a single advocacy document that clearly states MSBA's positions on issues related to public education. Member boards now have the opportunity to submit amendments and new resolutions to be included in the document. The Advocacy Committee will consider those proposals, along with the discussion at the June Delegate Assembly, and submitted comments before sending a final draft of the advocacy document to the Delegate Assembly for final approval in early October. Registration for the 2017 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators is now open. This year's event is scheduled for October 5th through 8th at the Lake of the Ozarks. You can register for the annual conference on the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia. This portion of the meeting is allocated for the Board to provide an update of current activities and events to the district that may be of special interest to board members and the community. First up will be Mr. Eber.
Nothing.
Ms. Ponder.
I think I'm loud enough to talk without it. So, my portion is the talent management, so I'm going to give an update on that right now. The Office of Human Resource Services, in collaboration with both the Department of Instructional Services and the Department of Alternative Education, is busy with providing multiple professional development opportunities for certified staff. Summer voluntary PE starts on Monday, July 24th, and we have 260 spaces filled for that week. Some of the topics being covered are trauma-informed teaching, restorative practices, and teachers' college writing training. Additionally, the District Evaluation Committee has chosen to add an additional evaluation indicator, 5.3B, which is secure teacher-student relationships. Training will be provided on July 24th, as well as throughout the first few weeks of school. Lastly, organizational health assessment process will conclude its first phase in the coming weeks. Assistant Superintendents of Instruction and the Principals will have one-on-one meetings with the organizational health consultants to start planning based on the survey data collected in the spring.
Thank you. Ms. Toggs.
My update is on the Facilities Department, as well as Technology. They are, we are required to do a fire alarm detection inspection, and that is annually, and it's going to be brought before the Board tonight. As a bid, they had three vendors. We also have a bid for repairing the, or modernizing the elevator at the STEAM School. Some of the STEAM School, some of the board members did tour the STEAM School yesterday, and all areas are basically completed and ready for school to begin. The projects this summer that have been worked on are district school cleaning, mulching playgrounds, Duchesne Classroom construction, and moving Probe to the Duchesne School, as well as moving early ed and some of the other moves that they had to make throughout the year. As far as the Technology Department, they've got the flat panels have arrived for the new STEAM School, and we're ready to go into action. AT&amp;T has run the circuit for internet to the building and then to the new data closet. And when we were there yesterday, we saw lots of wires, the blue wires for technology, so that's going to be a very big emphasis is the technology. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harge.
Good evening. My mayor, the strategic plan is networking, and the district is actively working to build community, engage stakeholders in meaningful ways. We are excited to announce two new communication tools in our efforts to keep stakeholders informed. First, we are launching a new notification system this week. The in-touch system will replace our school messenger system and add several features, including text messenger, and offers automatic attendance calling. Second, starting next week, we will begin using the Peachjar e-flyer service. Families will receive flyers via email rather than all those paper flyers being sent home or lost in bottom-of-backpacks. Peachjar provided the district case study showing significant savings in paper and printing costs, as well as savings in time spent copying and stuffing mailbox and backpacks. Look for information on Peachjar in the next few weeks, next few days. The district is excited about welcoming the community to a ribbon-cutting at the new STEAM Academy on Friday, August 4th, at 10:30 a.m. Yay! You may, our SVP, using the link on the district website. We hope the community will join us for Back-to-School Fair on Saturday, August 5th, from 9:00 to 12:30. And of course, the first day of school is August 9th, and we hope families will be ready to get their children off to a great start on the first day of school. Also, I would like to bring your attention, we have a suicide prevention awareness fundraiser hosted by the Florists Youth Advisory Commission, and this will be Saturday, September 16th, at St. Ferdinand's Park. There'll be a 5K race and one-mile run. There'll be, this will be a glow run. There'll also be a softball tournament, and also barbecue and raffle. If anyone is interested in being a vendor, giving donations, or being a sponsorship, I did put some flyers back there on the table for more information, or you can see myself. These are just some of the ways that the Ferguson-Florissant School District is building connection with stakeholders for the benefit of all students. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Dr. Thurman.
Hello. I am reporting on school decorum. In July, a Ferguson-Florissant administrative team sent eight members, it's a cohort group, to Harvard to attend the Public Education Leadership Program, otherwise known as PEL, to work on the relationship and influence that staff has on student academic success. The district team focused primarily on keeping students in class and in school to ensure that students will receive more instructional time. All four major student groups showed a dramatic decrease in days lost to school suspension and out-of-school suspension as a result of the problem of practice that we've been working on through the PEL Summer Institute. And when I looked through the information on the chart that was given to me, Mr. Bills, who's our school decorum expert, right, for white females, white males, black females and black males, those are the groups, there has been a decrease, I mean, an increase in instructional time of over 35% in some areas, or anywhere from 29% to 35% increase in instructional time over last year's numbers. So I think that we are headed in the right direction, so I'm very, very proud of that.
Dr. Gray.
Good evening. My portion is student achievement. Successful, we had a successful summer school program this summer. Participation was in elementary and secondary level. We had detailed, we will have detailed information that will be presented next month. Unofficial GLA and EOC scores are being analyzed at the district level, and official scores will be ready in August. Many teachers attended the PPL training this summer and are excited to implement this model into their classrooms. Started, we also started student open enrollment this week, gearing up for a successful new school year. So this year, and I actually already tried it out, we are doing online registration, and it's phenomenal, especially for parents who have multiple children. You don't have to do all the forms with the same information two, three times. So that system is really efficient, and I believe you can also go to some of the schools as well to complete, if you don't have computer access, you can go to some of the schools to complete your online registration. The STEM students' schedules are well underway and will be completed soon. Middle school teams attended IB initial training, and we are planning and prepared for our new teacher orientation, which will be next week. Thank you, and let's have a wonderful, wonderful school year.
Thank you. So, Dr. Davis will speak more about the Back-to-School Festival and the STEAM School grand opening that we're going to be having. I do want to bring to your attention two other back-to-school events that are happening within the community. Berkeley and Ward III, they're sponsoring a back-to-school health fair. Unfortunately, it's on the same day as our back-to-school kickoff, but that's being held as well, so. In, at the Ferguson-Emerson YMCA on Sunday, August 6th, they're hosting a back-to-school festival, backpack giveaway, hot dogs, fun games, things like that, and that is Sunday, August the 6th. The Ferguson Youth Initiative is doing their SPOT 394. They do this about every quarter, and they are looking for volunteers. That's going to be held this Saturday at the Emerson YMCA. So if you know of youth who want to go out, swim, play basketball, have fun, it's $3 in entry, and they are looking for volunteers. So if you're open and can help out for a couple hours, they would welcome it. You can contact Ferguson Youth Initiative through their website, send them a note. And, let's see, school registration. My wife did my daughters today, gave it two thumbs up. She said it was the best thing that she's experienced in this district for quite some time. She had it done within 10 minutes. It was fantastic, so kudos to the district for streamlining this process, and she said what you did, that if you have multiple kids, how easy it is. So, great job to the district for that. And that is all I have.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening to everyone, and really want to give kudos to Amy. Is she here, Amy? And Kevin? I mean, so many folks who have been working hard on the portal and making sure that's up and running so that parents can register children and access information. As a parent, I've been on it myself, and so it really is efficient, so it's good to hear that feedback, and so we always want to hear that. And sort of adding to some of what has already been said, a couple dates that we mentioned already, and I just want to maybe elaborate a little bit more. On the 28th of July, which is next week, we will have an all administrators meeting, and that meeting will be at the Federal Reserve Bank downtown, and we have one every year, and all the administrators come together and we talk about issues that are very pertinent to us for the coming school year. And the Federal Reserve always gives it to us at no charge or no cost to the district, and, but they also, we've been partnering with them. They purchased a lot of our AP Economics materials that students will be taking AP Econ at our high schools. That partnership is reciprocal, and I am so grateful for that because we're able to offer our students more opportunities. So the 28th is that meeting, it'll be all day for administrators, and I want to make sure that the community is aware of that and the preparation that's going into getting ready for this school year. The, on August 2nd, we'll have Complication, and that is where everybody comes together at the beginning of the year, sort of our big kickoff, our pow-wow for all employees, and we always have it at McClure in the hub, and it'll be the same this year, and we're going to be really focusing on some of the work we did at Harvard this past couple weeks ago. One of the things that I know is really important to our community is having school decorum to really go in the right direction, right? Behavior and those kinds of things. One of the outcomes from the training we got this summer was so helpful because it really helped us to sharpen our saw even more around not just the student-teacher relationship, but what are the conditions for those relationships? Like, how do and should teachers develop those relationships? As a quick example, many of you know that, you know, you can give an example like this. Johnny goes and teaches A's class and gives her a fit, goes and teaches B's class and does everything she asks him to do, right? And so you wonder, what are the things that enable Johnny to do well in one teacher's class and not the other? And we feel strongly about the conditions for success, school culture. School culture is critical, but how do you create that, right? And principals have to lead that work around how you create the kind of conditions that's a predictable environment so that when students come in and teachers, that they feel supported and that we encourage the kinds of relationships that teachers and students, we know are fruitful for, for their engagement and ultimately their, their learning. So we're excited about that. Complication will be on the 2nd, and we'll talk more about that to the entire staff, not just teachers, although, you know, there are two kinds of employees in our district, teachers and, y'all, awesome. And so, likewise on the buses, because that's a critical place, and during passing times between classes and what's going on there, the kind of conditions we sit there, as well as in the cafeteria and other places. So we are excited about that. August 4th is our STEAM School, our STEAM Academy ribbon-cutting ceremony, and we have invited quite a few people from the community, along with myself and the board president, who will be speaking, we have a couple of folks who will be speaking. I particularly asked the mayors in Hazelwood and Ferguson and Florissant to say a word or two, 35 seconds or so, because we want to keep it to 30 minutes, but we want the community to know how powerful this opportunity is for North County, not just for Florida, but North County, right? Because this is an investment in the education of North County. And I was at a banquet today, Glenico, with the Greater North County Chamber, I'm on that board, and just talking with some of the folks there around the support, and it's really a community effort. So we're really excited about that, and encourage you to encourage others to be there. It's going to be at 10:30 outside of the new building on Dunn Road. We're going to start on time as we do, and it'll be 30 minutes, 29.5 seconds, 29 minutes 53 seconds, but we'll be, you know, very concise, but we really want the community to come out. We've invited media, and we want to send the message that education is the priority, and we always say that, you know, I believe strongly that education is the best economic development. So we're really excited about that. Please come out. The building looks amazing. Still some things to do, the furniture is getting in, we hope to have everything up and ready on the 4th, depending on how the furniture comes in. Some of that has been there, some in the art room, for example, some of those tables are already up, the science rooms are ready, but we want to try to have it all together for you so the community can see what you all have done, what the community has done for our community, right? Because this would not have happened had I not passed, before I got here, you all were working on this. My hope is that we have responded to what the community has asked for, and that we can continue to invest in our, in our community in particular, for Florida and North County as a whole. The Back-to-School Fair is on the 5th. Every school will have a booth there. If you have children, if you have nieces, nephews, make sure that parents go out. We have lots of information. All schools are required to have a booth for information purposes in particular, so that parents can get what they need, supply lists, book packs, book bags, and all those things will be given out during that time. So we have a lot of things going on, on that entire weekend. August 9th, of course, as has been said, as Harrell said earlier, is our first day of school, and it's also our board meeting for August. So August 9th is a very, a very busy day. So please, if you are, if you have time, visit, visit the school, see what's going on in our buildings. We make, we're intentional about being in buildings. I am, specifically on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but I'll be in schools every day, the first week or two of school, just to make sure we are supporting teachers and students. The other part that I'll end on, a couple things here. We were awarded, I just learned today, the, we were awarded the homeless grant, that's a three-year grant that we have gotten in the past, and I think us and maybe St. Louis Public Schools got two, we're the only two in the region that got that grant. It's $150,000 a year for three years. So let's give Amy and that team a round of applause. We want to continue to, you know, bring in those resources into our district because it makes a difference when it comes to being fiscally prudent with resources that you trust us with. The two, we will have, and I will declare this on August 9th, it'll be declared to not be, we will have a 2 billion-word challenge day, right? We'll kick it off. Our kids met that challenge. We started in January, if you remember last year. Last year, we started in January, and our children read a billion words from January till May. So if they can do that, they can do 2 billion from August until May, and we set that expectation. Listen, children rise to the expectations you set, and if you set low expectations, that's where they go. If you set high expectations, that's where they go. We, we're having children read like nobody's business, y'all. I mean, I mean, Metile levels are going up and all those things that make me very passionate of the day, to see children reading and growing, and I'll tell you this, and I'll say this to my last-day owner, that when kids read more and grow intellectually, everything else goes, goes up as well. I think you agree with that, and so we want to push our kids to read at very high levels. We've been even more specific, though. We're looking at kids' specific Metile levels, making sure that they're getting books in their range, they can create a free profile on Metile.com, and they can, in that profile, have a reading list, and it asks students for their interests, so that students are selecting books that they're interested in, engagement, and they're getting books that they're interested in in their reading range, so they're growing. And so I think that is critically important. So we will have a 2 billion-word challenge, and I am more than confident that our students will, will meet that challenge. Finally, a lot has been going on this summer, PPL training, trains that we've been in, it really is about adult learning. You know, sometimes when I'm in meetings with different groups, you know, they call me superintendent, but I see myself as the elite learner. We all have to be learners so that our children grow, and when adults grow and are pushing themselves all the time, everybody, whether you drive a bus, and I'm going to renew my license, I keep saying that, I drove a bus for years. I was bragging to my wife, I said, you know, I've been on the bus for a year when I was a bus driver, so I just want you to know. But, but everybody has to be learners, and I encourage all of you who hear me and... And I encourage all of you who hear me and hear, and I won't say I'm still a radio man because I know they're paying, that I want you to read and show children in your sphere of influence how important reading is and growing is. So that is my report.
Thank you very much, everybody. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and keep them with District Policies 4054, 4059. And personnel law should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the board president may make, may, may make clarified remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any misstatement of facts. So it looks like we have one.
A couple more, I think. There is a couple.
Okay. First up will be Ms. Madrusik. We're going to introduce our new food service company.
Good evening, board. Good evening, family of Florissant and Florissant. I'm very excited today. We've got a really good group of people here. Effective July 1st, we have a new food service management company, and Southwest Foods Excellence, or SFE. They're very well represented tonight because tomorrow, or starting tomorrow and Friday, we're having a great training for our cafeteria staff employees. They brought in people from all over the country, and they will be training and working with our food service employees, helping learn, have them learn recipes and how to cook. I was going to ask John, who's the vice president of operations, to come up, and also our local team, and also Mike. Mike is our regional director, and then we have our local team, so I'll let John speak for just a second.
Hi. Thank you very much. We're very excited about our partnership with Ferguson and Florissant. We have been in St. Louis markets for about five years, have been working along with other districts and really trying to grow in this area, and we're very excited about our partnership. We've got Mike Butler, who's our director of regional operations, he lives here in St. Louis. Susan Smith is going to be your district staff, who I think also made some difference this evening. We have Kelly Visto, who I think you probably recognize, Scott Williams as well, and also Antoni Williams. Kelly, I'm sorry, Scott and Antoni are going to be co-directors overseeing the district. And then listed some folks that we've got joining us here. Mike will be here. Kevin Gutierrez is the director of regional operations from New Mexico. Megan Praley is a child nutrition operations director who is here local that's going to be joining us tomorrow. We have Crystal Simmons, who's also a child nutrition operations director. Bill Harrod, who's a chef from Phoenix Market, had to iron his chef coat. Chef coat is great. We have Chef Tori Christie, who's over from Indiana. And then we have Susan Laub, who's a child nutrition operations director from Arizona as well. So that's the team that's going to come in. We're going to start tomorrow by training your cafeteria managers and bringing them in and getting everybody around them and getting them comfortable with the changes we want to make to improve the quality of food for your students. Then the next day, we're going to have your entire staff come in, and we're going to break them up into three different groups. And then we are going to work shoulder to shoulder, partner with your cafeteria managers, teach them how to do what they learned today before. Because we understand that if we cannot be successful through your, your staff and the leaders you already have in your cafeterias, we won't be a great, great partner for you. So it's our intention to help train the existing cafeteria managers you have, to help build the staff that you have, because they're the people that truly know your students. They're the people that have, you know, had your students, had your students' parents here for many, many years. So we're very excited to partner with them, show them what we do that gave you the opportunity to select us to be your food service provider, show them how to make better food for your kids, and be a great enhancement to your academic process.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of comments. Last year, we renovated McClure, I mean Berkeley Middle School. And so I just have a question in terms of the phone service over there, if that phone service is now hooked to the secondary school system or not? And if not, I think I would like to encourage us to get that done. And then the other thing is, at the last board meeting, I was personally embarrassed for all of us in that I feel that age has privileges. And one of our citizens came up to make a presentation, probably out of line, but I think there's a way that we can have a forum in the building and not embarrass our senior citizens who have been with us for years and probably longer than anybody on the board of any of us in this room. And I'd just like to say that I, I was personally embarrassed, and it was a public referendum, and I didn't, I didn't think that it was necessary. And I would hope that in the future, that the board members, when they would speak to our senior citizens or anyone who comes to the podium to speak, that we would first of all go through the president before we decide to put someone down. And then the other thing is to just say congratulations to our two board members, three board members who have received your board certification. We're proud of that. And I'm really looking forward to the ribbon-cutting.
Do you have anybody else who wishes to address the board at this time? Very enough. Thank you very much. Dr. Fermin, would you please read the disbursements?
Payroll, teacher and non-teacher, thirteen million, two hundred ninety-six thousand, seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents. Operational disbursements, three million, fifteen thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. And a total of sixteen million, three hundred eleven thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Need a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here and none, motion passed. Yeah, I just did, was it Ms. Gazzle, could have given a presentation? Is it Gary's? All right. Okay, all right. At this time, we're going to have a presentation on Break the Pipeline Campaign. Mr. Beals, as I understand you're giving the presentation?
This is short.
Sure. And this will be for board information only.
Board information. Good evening, board, superintendent and Ferguson, Florissant family. Not really a presentation at this particular point, but just some information about some of the initiatives that we're working on. And really, this is about the Break the School to Prison Pipeline. So I just wanted to give the board a little bit of information and our Ferguson, Florissant family on some of the work that we're doing. The goals of the Break the School to Prison Pipeline Campaign is to focus public attention on the criminalization process that impacts our children, to help challenge the various agencies, individuals, and organizations that work with both students as well as adults. How do we do this? We do this by coming together to break the cycle of incarceration through enhanced prevention, intervention, and accountability efforts. We want the public to know that millions of children are being pushed out of schools and into the prison system. We're working with the Metropolitan Congregation United to challenge systems to reevaluate how they handle students. Just a couple of the issues, initiatives that we are working on personally in this district are certainly the rewriting of our students' expectation code, which is very important. Some of the work that we've done, getting other partners like bringing the organization Elevate into our district this year, will be housed at McClure to work with our young youth, not only as a mentoring program within the school, but actually outside the school as well. District mentors have been brought on board, and we're hoping to add more. Also, our restorative justice initiative in the district this year, work we've done in the PELP program at Harvard, bringing that great work back here. And also some of the work that Great Circle is doing within our schools every day. So we're just very, very proud of the initiatives and the partnership in working with organizations to break this pipeline. And if the board will, I'd like to have Carol just come up just shortly and just, certainly Carol worked with the Metropolitan Congregation, just give a few words.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Mr. Beals said it, as far as the Break the Pipeline Campaign, we have three task forces within the campaign. Education Task Force, that I'm a leader with, our Policing Task Force, and our Juvenile Justice Task Force. Because those are the three parts of the School to Prison Pipeline. So our goal is to, you know, cut back, to eliminate as much as possible out-of-school suspensions, keep the kids in school. That's, that's the main goal of the whole situation. Keep them in school and out of the courtroom and out of the prisons. And so we know if they're in school, and it's great to hear that there's thirty-five percent more instructional time with the reduction of the suspensions, and that's great to hear. So, you know, we want, we want to stop it before the kids ever even get into the pipeline, keep them in school. And we appreciate your support and your working with us. We will be having a public meeting November the 9th to celebrate the improvements that every district has made. And we encourage you, if you have any more questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And anyone in the community, we need your help too, to keep our kids in school.
And here again, here again, I would just like to publicly thank the board and superintendent for allowing me to, you know, to work on this, these issues for our particular district. It's very important. They say the best time, you know, to plant a tree is today, and that's exactly what we're doing. So just thank you all again, and thank our, our family for being involved in this and our community.
Ms. Bass and Ms. Ferris will now come forward, and Barbara Smith will come forward to talk to us about the Spanish and French language students trip.
Good evening, president and fellow board members. Dr. Davis. The Ferguson, Florissant world language students have been taking trips related to Spanish and French language acquisition for several decades now. Two current world language teachers would like to continue this experiential learning by offering our students the opportunity to travel to target language nations in the spring of 2018. A portion of the trip is during spring break, therefore, students would miss less than five days of school. Students will not only get to tour and hear target languages in the native speaking setting, but also spend several days with host families where they will get the opportunity to participate and practice second language acquisition. The France trip is around thirty-five hundred dollars, and to go to Spain, thirty-eight hundred dollars of a student-funded trip. The district will pay for substitutes for four days. The vendor Expeditas offers need-based scholarships for up to forty percent, as well as discounts for early registration. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Victoria Ferris and Ms. Barbara Smith to give a brief presentation.
Sorry. Ms. Smith, she was replaced.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not know that. To talk to you about this opportunity for students.
Hi, I'm Nikki Ferris, and this is my former student and student traveler, Monet Davis, currently attending St. Louis Community College. And I, oh, it's already up, yay. Didn't notice that. So I'm the World Language Department Chair, and I teach Spanish at McClure. Since 1987, McClure teachers have taken French and Spanish students abroad to give them the opportunity to use new language skills as they travel to cultural and historical locations. We are able to observe and participate in unique activities, and our students and teachers make friends and memories that last a lifetime.
Our journey takes about twelve to fifteen days. About half of the trip is spent traveling to relevant sites and attractions with our group of students and teachers. The other time abroad is spent living with the host family.
All of our trips have been coordinated through the Minneapolis-based group Intercultural Student Experiences, which is now called Expeditas. This organization has been providing meaningful language immersion experiences for over forty-five years. I include myself as one of the first travelers from McClure. In 1989, I went to Spain with my former teacher. On the screen, you can see several destinations that we have prepared travel trips for our kids. This Smith, or excuse me, this spring, Mrs. Smith, our French teacher, who was not able to come tonight, she'll be taking a small group to France. And in the fall, this, well, actually, the summer, I'll begin preparations for taking a group to a Spanish-speaking country, maybe Spain, but maybe Costa Rica, Ecuador, Peru, Puerto Rico, in March of 2019.
The program costs range from twenty-eight hundred dollars to forty-two hundred dollars, depending on the itinerary chosen by students and parents, and are paid directly to Expeditas in increments. These costs cover airfare, ground transportation, hotels, most attractions, and most meals during our tour.
Students have to bring their own money for some meals and their personal needs and souvenirs, and possibly for outings that they have with their host families. Other than that, on the screen, you can see we have several ways for families to reduce costs. We do a lot of different type of fundraising activities. We encourage students to apply early so that they can receive a two-hundred-dollar discount. Expeditas offers up to forty percent scholarships for families who have economic needs. The McClure Club International also offers a small scholarship. And with that, students are able to defray a lot of their own personal spending money. So we start early so that we can help families save as much money as possible.
There are so many benefits of traveling abroad. These trips provide students with opportunities to use the cultural information and language skills they have been learning in our classrooms, in real-life situations, with native speakers in their daily lives.
That's Monet playing soccer there with some elementary kids in Costa Rica.
Yeah, I'll see them run for their money, too.
She also taught them how to whip a ne-nee. Every single day. And then they taught us some of their dances. We also have these trips to help students learn to use their language skills. They're able, in this partially independent scenario, to really show and strengthen their abilities to communicate. They develop self-confidence beyond your wildest imaginations, and they build real-life problem-solving skills that come from being outside someone's comfort zone. And that's Monet there grinding sugarcane into cane water. Then we all drank it later. It was not gross.
Students experience daily life in another culture by taking public transportation, shopping, ordering in restaurants, bargaining in markets, transiting through traffic, meeting community groups, and sharing meals, attending, attending schools, and interacting with people from all walks of life.
It's a shame you couldn't see that picture better. We met with an indigenous group, and they taught us a lot of their skills and about their culture. And then in the other picture, we were actually bargaining with people in the local market. And then we later shared all of our bargain basement fruits and veggies and eating session. We did that a few times. For two weeks, our students are completely immersed in experiential lessons in geography, art, architecture, ecology, math, and history. This trip is the ultimate problem-based learning experience, and it results in increased cultural competence and augmented visions that our students bring back to McClure and our community to apply for their, towards their academic and professional futures.
For example, Allison from the photo on the left is a recent graduate of the University of Southern California and is currently pursuing a master's in social justice. The student group on the right includes a medical resident, two lawyers, two teachers, and an accountant, a regional manager of Uber, an officer in the Army, in the National Reserve, and, and a homemaker with two bilingual children.
A great deal of time and work goes into preparing these trips for our students. A great deal of time and work goes into preparing these trips for our students. Once permission has been granted by the district, we begin promoting the trip in all our classes, and all students in levels two and higher are encouraged to apply. In the fall semester, we hold informational meetings for students and parents, and at this meeting, we begin recruiting and we discuss fundraising, which we start that semester. Often, we have another parent meeting in January for those who were not able to attend. And during second semester, interested students begin their application process. They must get parental consent to apply for the program and to begin raising funds. We have them complete a questionnaire about their goals for language and culture learning. And later, students also procure teacher recommendations. We must have at least four to six participants to form our groups, and we are very selective in choosing our travelers.
We will not take any student that we cannot trust. Students cannot have referrals for negative behavior. Students must have 90% attendance and no excessive tardies. Positive teacher recommendations from teachers and coaches. The student must be taking French or Spanish level three or above and have a C average or better in the language. Students must be a sophomore, junior, or senior the year of the trip. An overall GPA of 2.5 or above is required. The student must be willing to attend the regular meetings, which are necessary to cover the 140 pages of materials in the target language which prepare us for the trip. Students must be responsible and able to meet deadlines.
We encourage our students to apply early, as I said, so that once approved, they can register with Expeditas and make their first payment by June 1st to get the early bird discount. Once students make their down payments, we provide them with information on how to get their passports. And we still accept applications through September of the next school year. From October to February, we fundraise and prepare the students in a series of workshops so they will be ready for their journey. And a month before the trip, we remind students, teachers of their upcoming absence, and request that they discuss expectations for students to complete assignments. We also meet with parents once more to review the itinerary, emergency procedures, and expectations for contact with their children during the trip. Our adventure takes place during spring break and an additional week either before or after. Upon returning, students present about their experience at McClure or at McClure North, where I've had several students join me in the recent past.
And at this time, we thank you for your attention, and we would like to invite you to ask questions.
Any questions you might have.
Again, this is just for board information, but do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I would just like to say that Erin went twice. She went in 96 and 98, and it was the most wonderful thing that she did through her high school career. The only thing is, she still is traveling because of going with her grandpa. So, it was wonderful. She grew up, she was no longer my baby, but she had a wonderful time, and she really is still using her Spanish while she's teaching, so.
Y'all can be it.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for the opportunity. I believe the presentation will be available to distribute. These are some of the pictures from our recent trips and some of our adventures. And I am at McClure High School every day, starting August 2nd, if you would like to meet with me or call me for more details. Thanks again.
All right, at this time, we'll have Ms. Raymer come forward to approve the professional development budget report, and this will be for board action.
Good evening. Can you see me? Wait a minute. I should wear taller heels. So, Kevin and I are going to share the podium tonight, those of you that may or may not be aware. Kevin is leaving ME and PD, and he will be math full-time to help our, help and support our secondary math teachers and kiddos. So, I just want to publicly, probably going to tear up a little bit here. I just want to publicly thank Kevin for all the work that he's done in professional development. The document that you have in front of you would not be possible without him, so if we could give him a round of applause for all of his work.
Kevin's not going anywhere, y'all. He's still on the team, right? But he's amazing, he knows that.
Yeah, I've gotten a little taste. We have new teacher orientation and voluntary PD week, and yeah, he did not tell me how much work he really did. So, we're going to go ahead and get started. He's going to read the proposal.
So, this year, the district professional development committee has accomplished much. The attached report summarizes that work. Highlights of the report include the continued development of the professional learning program for teachers, improvement of the new teacher orientation and training, further alignment of the work of the PDC to support district's strategic and comprehensive school improvement plans, increased cohesion and teacher representation within the committee, and more collaboration with the administration. The PDC committee is comprised of teachers from each building, and NEA rep, a principal representative from each level, a board member, and the committee is guided by the executive team. The committee met four days this year to accomplish their work. The work of the PDC is directed by local, state, and federal requirements. The cost is $440,555.66 for the 2017-18 school year, and is funded by local, state, and federal funds.
So, before you approve it, I kind of wanted to go over a few, just kind of some highlights for you, because I know it's a huge document. So, overall, our staff is pretty satisfied with the professional development that they're receiving. Most of our percentages were pretty high, above 80% approval rating, so we were pretty pleased with that. There are a couple of areas of growth that I wanted to point out to you that we are, as a PDC committee, we are addressing this year, and what we're doing to address them. So, the first thing, one area of growth is PBIS, and we've been talking about decorum today. So, if you notice, in, for PBIS, 64% of teachers said that they were trained on universals, and only 59% said that they were trained on Tier 2. So, you know, that's pretty concerning for us, because it's lower than last year. So, one way that we are addressing that as a PDC committee, as well as in conjunction with administration, those seven non-student attendance days that were approved in the calendar, so half those, so while ILTs are meeting for the full day, the rest of the staff will be receiving training on PBIS, CI3T, decorum, 5.3B with NEE, so improving student-teacher relationships. So, all of that will be happening with the rest of the staff in the morning, so that's going to be consistent district-wide. Everybody will be receiving the same training on that. And then, in the afternoon on those days, the rest of the staff will be working on various curricular projects, PBL, unpacking standards, really looking at curriculum writing and standards addressed in everybody's curricular area. And at the end of the day, they'll be coming back together to calibrate in, at their buildings to ensure that one team knew what the other team was doing, and then, the teams will then get together to present the information to each other on the half-days, the early-release days. So, there's a definite plan to ensure that we are, that we're one district united, and we're all getting the same, the same message across all schools. So, we're pretty excited about that. And addition to that, on our design team for both PBIS and for ILT, we have added more teacher voice, which was really important, so PDC can really feel connected to all of the professional development that happens in the district, and not just like PDC workshops that we, that we also put on. So, the NEA rep, Lori Samelman, and, or the NEA president, sorry, and the PDC chair will also be joining us for those design teams. So, we're pretty excited about having more teacher voice on those teams. In addition, I'm sorry, no, I'm last, so I'm trying to be brief, but those of you that know me, know I'm not usually brief, so, sorry. So, another thing that I wanted to highlight is the utilization of the menu of PD presenters. So, this was really concerning for me, being professional development, and it's kind of my passion. So, only 55% of staff said that they utilize that, so that's something I really want to focus on this year, is building the capacity within. We have so many smart, talented, capable people that are absolutely capable of providing professional development and being model classroom teachers, and really leading the work. And so, I want to really spend some time, and the PDC committee wants to spend time developing themselves and their abilities to provide professional development, as well as the ability of all of our teachers, and really build on each other's strengths, and look into ourselves to see what we're really passionate about, and provide others with that same expertise. So, we're really going to work on building capacity in all of our staff, so we don't have to look outside. We have so many great people here, so we're just not tapping into it. So, we really want to, that's another area of focus for us. So, we do have our voluntary PD week starting on Monday. New teacher orientation starts on Thursday, so we're excited about that. And then, we're also, so how all the parents are happy about the streamlining of the registration process. We are also going online. It will go live probably August the 1st. Our request to travel form, I know this probably sounds minor, but it's pretty big for us. The request to travel form has been a paper process, and so, the teacher wants to go to professional development, and they fill out a form, it has to be signed by the BLT, and it goes to the building principal, then it goes to assistant superintendent, and then it goes to my office, and it travels through so many different people that sometimes it takes three to four weeks by the time it gets around to everybody. So, by going online, we'll have it done in three to four days, which so, which makes a turnaround just so much better for being able to secure a sub and to be able to get in registration on time and things like that, so. So, those are just some highlights, and at this time, I'm going to open it up for questions.
Do you need a motion to accept the professional development report evaluation?
Submit.
All right, motions are made, and seconded, discussion.
So, I want to add, just one, I think, very important point that Liz was talking about, and I think you all would identify with this a lot. You know, we've been having conversations around substitute teachers, right? And Dr. Boyd presented on that a few months back. We listened to teachers about this, and we came back to the board, you all approved us to shift the calendar, the student calendar. And with what she's just mentioned, all those days, the ILT will be coming together in the last two years, it's been on days that students were also in school, right? So, we've had to get substitute teachers to the tune of 120 to 30 substitute teachers a day for those ILT days, right? So, the calendar is such that this coming year, starting in August, all of those are non-student days, which takes away that pressure of having to worry about a sub, especially with teachers who have prepared, or the sub counts on the last minute, and all those issues that go with that. But the other part is that, you know, when a teacher leaves, though, the sub is for her, all of the teachers, students don't get that instruction for that day, right? So, that's pretty powerful. The other part is that ILTs, we're expecting to see change in teacher practice, but all teachers aren't getting the same information at the same time, so they can work together and collaborate, and then go back in the classroom and practice, because sub issues and other issues, that has caused a problem with implementation, right? Now, ILTs at every school will have the ability to come to every session, get the same information, and go back to the schools and work together, at the end of the day, on collaborating around what they've learned, right? That's powerful, and that's important, and it's also safer in terms of dollars for us, right? So, I just wanted to make that point, that these things may seem small and subtle, but anything I can save a dollar and also make sure teachers get happy because they can do their work, I mean, it's a win-win. I just had to say that, and I think I got an amen of that for my teachers.
Yes, you got bindingness.
So, I just wanted to make sure that we know that that is, that's the intentional work that the surveys give us, and that we listen to what folks are saying, the ones who are doing this work hard every day for children, so it's too important not to say.
And in addition to that, we're really trying to ensure that teachers are in front of kids, and so, and administrators are in buildings, so most of the professional development that we're doing is before school starts. It's, we're even getting ready to do an NCI training on a Saturday morning and paying people to come. So, anything that we can do to reduce the, it's not really reducing costs as far as subs, because we're paying people to attend, but the benefit outweighs the cost with teachers being in front of kids, and that's what is the most important thing here, so.
And I got to underscore that, and this is critical now, so, and we went through this, Kevin can vouch, Kevin Vogel can vouch, and all of the, Kevin can, that we spent a couple of weeks going through this document, talking about every single one of the PD opportunities, right? And one, the one thing that, the message that we're trying to send clearly to everybody is that we want teachers, and teachers have said this to us, protect our teaching time, because I need to be able to be in my classroom. I'm being pulled out to go to a meeting at central office, or wherever I'm needing to go to a meeting, and it's causing me to have to prepare lessons, and I'm away from my kids, right? So, we have been intentional around protecting teaching time. So, what she's just saying is really important, that the more a teacher, teachers' time can be protected, and she and he can do the work that they are there to do, the children are the beneficiaries of that, so, good stuff.
Any other questions?
I have a question in regards to the section on the data and the goals. How did you guys come up with the goals?
So, as far as the PDC goals, so based on the data, that's what, and the goals are in a five-year plan, so Kevin probably could talk more about that. You want to start, Kelly?
Yeah, listen. So, we specifically designed that around our district SECP plan, so it directly aligns to our district SECP. So, we look at those initiatives that the district has, and then the PDC works in those confines and creates those goals.
Okay, and when will we receive an update? I see right now it's 2015, 2016, and then I see that 2016, 2017, some of the data says we'll get it in, but when will we, will we, we provided an update or this is the only time?
So, the APR is not available yet. All the other data is within that report, but just the APR piece is the part that we will be getting, I think it's August, sometime in August when we get the official.
So, will you guys read, give us this report, or we will have to, how will we get this information?
So, we will have a board work session once we get the APR data, so that we, so that we, so that you all get it first, and that we can have conversations about what those goals look like that you set for me in the district, and then they will use that as a part of bringing back to the community what that change looks like, one. Two, you know, so here's an opportunity for, in my head, regulatory reform from the state level, because when we get APR scores, we need this information so much sooner, so that we can make really good decisions for children, especially over the summertime, right? So that we can make instructional decisions about the kind of support they need in preparation for the coming school year. I know when tests change, that sometimes, you know, I've seen it where, you know, you know, some states don't get tests back until September and October, and that's not beneficial for not only the teacher who really needs it, but the parents and the kids, right? So, if a parent comes to us and say, "I need to really get my child some support," and we don't have the data, we need to show how your child did this year, it just, it causes us a lot of angst, it causes me a lot of angst. And so, one of the things I said, especially in Jeff City, is that, you know, that's one of those regulations that we need to change from the state level, so that schools get data a lot sooner, so that we can use that data. I'd like to use that data for decisions when it comes to promotion, right? I think it's important. I think it's important to know, you know, soon when kids get the, you know, how they did for the year. So, yeah, to your point, you know, we'll have a board work session, in fact, riding out on this earlier, we'll have a work session to specifically go over the APR data, and as soon as we get it, you'll get it from me, and then we'll throw that out to the community around what those goal changes look like for the coming school year.
And then, at that time, we'll update the plan and send that out.
So, you'll send it to me?
Yeah.
That's what I need.
That's what we did last year. That's what we did last year.
I was getting that very soon.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the professional development budget report, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passed. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
I was going to close.
Oh, I need a motion to move into closed session. Second. All right, call for vote.
Mr. Eber.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Ms. Ponder.
Aye.
Ms. Hawke.
Aye.
Ms. Hart.
Aye.
Secretary votes aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everybody. Enjoy your evening. Enjoy your evening.